Evening, and I apologize for that. But a lot of good comments were made, and hopefully we're moving our city forward in the right direction. So for those of you who are here for the first time, I'd like to say a couple of things so you understand the procedure. We'll start out with a pledge and a roll call of attendance, those who are on the commission. And then we have an opportunity to recognize people or events that the commission will do tonight, and those are in the form of a presentation. And tonight, I think we have four presentations, and each will be hosted by a member of the commission, and proclamation will be either read or submitted. And we'll try to get to your individual item as soon as possible. I know that a lot of people are here on any specific item, but please be patient, and perhaps you'll see a little bit about how the City Commission works tonight. But before I begin...
Mayor, sorry, Ben, I just can't see the video of the chambers, or...
Okay, could you folks work on that?
Oh, there, now I can, thanks, Mayor.
Okay.
Thanks, IT.
So the City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting its commission meetings in both a virtual and in-person format. For additional information on how to view or sign up to speak at a meeting, could you please visit www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings? I'll repeat that. To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. One, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, destructive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, while you're on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the meeting broadcast on either FL TV, YouTube, Comcast, AT&amp;T, however you're watching us. Because to watch simultaneously, you would incur delays with the broadcast. I will call upon you when it's your turn to speak, and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers into "listen-only" mode, and you will be unmuted to speak when recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted, and you may either hang up to exit the meeting, or stay on and listen to the rest of the proceedings. So may I invite everybody to please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie. Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here. There are a few revisions to tonight's agenda. CM 5 revised the resource impact section of the memo. CR 5 Exhibit 1 revised to add Exhibits A and B on Pages 14 and 15. And R 3 revised the resource impact section of the memo. So with regard to the agenda and the minutes, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Don't break your...
Second. Actually, Mayor, if... I did have one slight edit, though.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
What is that?
On the September 8th minutes, the first budget hearing minutes, are we up to that yet? Is that part of the minutes that you're asking for right now? There you go, it's the only set. On Page 4, on the bottom, Commissioner McKenzie's name is spelled incorrectly.
Okay.
There was a person that spoke. Is that the person that... There was someone from the public, I think, at the meeting.
Well, this says Commissioner McKenzie commented on his perspective.
And if that's spelled incorrect, then that would be incorrect.
I would have a... I would think that would be Commissioner McKenzie. So we need to just correct the spelling of the commissioner's name. Bottom of page, but that's it. And with that, I will move the minutes, Mayor.
Do I hear a second? This is minutes and the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Moved. Moved to second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present. Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are approved as amended. So tonight, we begin with our first of four presentations, and I would invite Commissioner Sorenson, who will present a proclamation regarding Rowdy Gifford Homelessness Awareness Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner...
Thanks, Mayor. And I didn't know if anyone is there, kind of representing?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up.
In fact, all these folks, Gene Albock, Bob, Carlos...
Oh, great.
Kristy Messer, Karen Pintado, Jody Swett... Was that pronounced Sweet? Sweet. Sarah Wagner and Michael Wright. Thank you all for being here tonight. Michael, I haven't seen you in such a long time. How are you? Okay, Commissioner?
Awesome, thanks, Mayor. These are just awesome public servants here in front of you that have given selflessly to help those in need, those that are facing homelessness. I just thank all of you for being here and for celebrating Rowdy's legacy. So while you're taking some pictures, Mayor, I'll just go ahead and read away. In recognition of Rowdy Gifford, whereas since 2017, Rowdy Gifford assisted over 15,000 homeless residents of the City of Fort Lauderdale through his service with Showering Love, a nonprofit organization that aims to restore dignity, hope, and health to people experiencing homelessness. Whereas graduating high school, Rowdy joined the Army and was sent to Vietnam after completing his service to this country. Rowdy went on to work as a plumber for the next 20 years and earned the distinction of master plumber. Rowdy then became a plumbing inspector and plans examiner for the City of Parkland. And whereas Rowdy was deeply committed to Showering Love and graciously used his skills to transform a transit bus into Grace, which is amazing, a fully mobile, ADA-compliant, dignified showering and recovery inspiration platform. And whereas he demonstrated his ongoing compassion for Fort Lauderdale's less fortunate but providing mobile showers, new clothing, hygiene kits, and supportive services aboard Grace, Rowdy was a strong advocate for ending homelessness and inspiring people to become self-sufficient in a nonjudgmental way. Whereas Rowdy unselfishly volunteered countless hours and exhibited outstanding community spirit while acting as an agent of positive change, he left an indelible mark on the hearts of all who knew him. Now, therefore, we as City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale hereby proclaim September 21st, 2021, as Rowdy Gifford Homelessness Awareness Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale and honor Rowdy for his unwavering commitment. Signed, Your Mayor, Dean J. Trentalis. Thank you, Mayor.
Here, here. Who will be accepting the proclamation? Okay, so Jeff, do we have the copy here? So it is my pleasure to be able to present to you the actual proclamation that was just read by Commissioner Sorenson, and would you like to share a few words with us?
I just want to say thank you so much. Rowdy did give so much of himself. He's the first one to figure out how to take a city boss and make mobile showers out of it. He once was homeless himself, became a chief plumbing engineer, and when I brought it to him, he said, absolutely, we're going to do it. Rowdy, unfortunately, lost his life to COVID. He was one of the first to go, and he was way too young. But he did so much, and he left his fingerprint on our city, and this means so much for him to keep his legacy and his memory alive. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Can we take a photo with us? Just get back here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, while you're going up there, I'll start the next one, if that's all right?
Sure. So Commissioner Sorenson will now recognize the Fort Lauderdale Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as CERT, for being named the 2021 Florida CERT Team of the Year. Wow, that's...
Get up here, CERT team. I see you in your beautiful green. I'll see you in your beautiful green. All right.
Come on down.
Chief Kerr, thank you.
We know the green shirts, we've seen them.
The green shirts. So, Mayor, whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale's Community Emergency Response Team, CERT team, was recognized at the 2021 Florida CERT Conference as the 2021 Florida CERT Team of the Year. The team was commended for its role in ensuring that Fort Lauderdale is well-prepared to respond, recover, and mitigate any hazardous situations faced by our government, neighbors, institutions, and businesses. And whereas the CERT team was formed in 1996 and is administered by the city's emergency management office, this team has an increasingly vital role in the city and county's emergency disaster and recovery plan. And whereas through the CERT training, this award-winning group has a better overall understanding of the potential risks to our home, neighborhoods, and workplaces, they're equipped to provide emergency services, including establishing command posts, basic first aid, fire suppression, accessing assigned areas, and performing light search, rescue, and triage. And whereas this 150-member team assists our city police department, fire rescue department, and domestic preparedness and emergency management bureau. Not only do the members assist with various events, they also play an essential role in the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, we recognize the members of this team as pillars of public service by making Fort Lauderdale safer, stronger, better-prepared, and more resilient. Whereas the mayor and city commission are proud and honored to issue this proclamation to the Fort Lauderdale CERT team and commend them on a job well done. Now, therefore, we as the city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale hereby proclaim September 21st, 2020, as Fort Lauderdale Community Emergency Response Team Day. Signed, your Mayor Dean J. Trentalis.
Does someone from the team... Do they have a team captain? Would I say a few words on behalf of the group?
Well, you're the commands... You're the... Okay, you're the command staff.
Somewhere, yes, yes. Thank you all very much. A couple of points I want to make. Number one, one of the reasons that we are so successful is not only because of the commitment of our volunteers, but also the commitment of the city to our resources and the things that we do. And to everyone, thank you. It has worked out just really, really well for all of us. Now, if I can give you a short commercial to give you some perspective, we were named Team of the Year. There's 115 teams in the state that were eligible, so it wasn't without some small competition, if you will. And 2018, we were actually the national team of the year, and there's 2,700 teams that are involved in that in 2018. So, that's our bragging, and you'll see us around town in our green shirts and our green CERT truck. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mark. I heard there was really no competition that year. So, Chief Kerr, don't go away. Okay. Our fire chief will now recognize Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue, Ocean Rescue accomplishments at the U.S. Life Saving Association Nationals Competition.
Thank you, Mayor. Would those lifeguards please come forward? And bring your family, and bring your daughter, and your husband, and... So, while they're waking their way up here, the Fort Lauderdale Ocean Rescue Competition Team, they attended the United States Lifeguard Association Nationals in South Padre Island, Texas, August 5th through the 7th. And the team consisted of Lieutenant Mitch McCready, Lifeguard Casey Francis, Lifeguard Philip McCready, and Chief Alexandra O'Connor. This small but mighty team came in second place in the B Division. Events included running, swimming, paddling, rowing, and surf skiing. Lifeguard Casey Francis scored 151 points, more than any other competitor deeming her the high-point winner. And Francis and O'Connor were on the winning landline team and went 1-2 in the American Iron Woman, which is a run, swim, paddle, and row. Francis also won gold in the Rescue Race and Taplin Relay, silver in the International Iron Woman and Paddle Relay, and bronze in the Surfboard Run Swim Run and Surf Swim. It's almost like she is trying to keep up with her Olympic...
That's great.
Three medals. And O'Connor won the Surf Boat and American Iron Woman in her age group and placed third in open surf boat with Francis. Lieutenant Mitch McCready and Lifeguard Philip McCready made it to the Surfboard Surf Boat Finals, scoring points for their team. And Philip McCready also placed 11th in Beach Flags. Fort Lauderdale Ocean Rescue had a successful showing at the Lifeguard Nationals and cannot wait to compete next year in California. And I do want to make a comment that they totally support themselves with fundraisers and their own efforts and own money to compete in these Lifeguard Nationals. So, congratulations, I'm so proud of you, and thank you for being part of our team.
Thank you, team.
Thank you, Mayor.
Finally, we invite Winterfest, who will recognize Sergeant Todd Mills for his dedication to the Winterfest Boat Parade event. And we invite Lisa Scott Founds, Dawn Deal, and Kathy Kelleher from Winterfest, Inc., to make the presentation. Good evening, Lisa.
Hi, everyone, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Nice to see you all. We're excited this year to be celebrating Winterfest's 50th anniversary. And Sergeant Mills has been with us since 2015. We work with over 32 different agencies, Coast Guard, just a vast array of organizations and people. We have 4,000 boats out on the water in the 12 miles. And this gentleman has organized such an amazing staging area and the show, works with BSO in a friendly manner, which is awesome to see, and really has coordinated so many different things and brought new ideas to Winterfest. And so, we are so very sad to see you go, but we are so grateful that we were able to learn from you and certainly will abide by most of what you told us to do. But in the meantime, I just wanted to present this award of excellence as a reminder of the deep appreciation that the members of Winterfest have for you. It's with extreme gratitude for your dedicated service and leadership to ensure a safe and enjoyable parade for participants and spectators. And if all of you realize that this is the one-day largest event in the state of Florida with over a million people that come out internationally, you know, normally recognized pre-COVID, but we're getting back there, and we're just so excited, and we are just so very fortunate to have you. And we have an event in the best city in the entire United States.
Great, congratulations. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we now begin with the regular meeting. And at this point, I will ask each member of the commission if they have an item from the consent agenda that they would like pulled. What that means is that there are a number of items on called Consent Items. And we vote on them all at once, unless there's a member of the commission that asks for one of them to be discussed separately. And at that time, we will discuss it and vote on it separately. If you're a member of the public, and there's an item that has not been pulled, but you do want to talk about it, after we ask each member of the commission which items they would like pulled, if that item has not been pulled, that will be the time when I will invite you to come to the podium and speak on that particular consent agenda item. So, we'll begin with the vice mayor. Vice Mayor, do you have any items you'd like to be pulled?
No.
None? Commissioner McKenzie?
I don't have any, but I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Can we put CRA ahead of...
CRA, we're going to put after... We're going to do it after the evening meeting.
After the evening?
Yeah.
At the end?
At the end.
They have so little, and they wait...
Well, this is... Anyway, we're in the middle of this...
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
After we do...
After the meeting, yeah, after the meeting.
Yeah. That's all I'm asking. You asked a little question.
Okay. So, you have any items you're pulling? Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. CM 1. That's it.
Okay. And Commissioner Sorensen?
None, thanks, Mayor.
None, okay. So, except for CM 1, is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on a consent agenda item? Anyone virtually?
I'm not seeing anybody with a raised hand.
Wait a minute, I got a few here, hold on.
You do?
Yeah.
How'd you get those?
So, CM 1 is only for questions only. On CR 3, we have Wayne Kerr. Wayne, are you on the line?
I do not see that name.
You do not see Wayne Kerr, K-E-R-R?
Do not.
Okay. CR 5, April Kirk, only for questions.
She should be in the audience.
Questions. CP 2, Ron Book, for questions only. Let's see. Raina Brown on CP 2. Raina, are you on? But you work with Mr. Book, so I assume it's for questions only. And Jared Rosenstein?
That would be questions only.
The consent agenda items. Okay, there being nobody. Except for CM 1, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those consent agenda items are now approved. CM 1?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about this and also wanted to know how my colleagues feel. When I was reading the backup, and first of all, happy birthday to Chantel for her 50th birthday. I'm sorry if I gave that away. Oh, my God, there you are, happy birthday. So, don't take any of this personally. But I wanted to know, now that I know you're right there, just don't take any of this personally. So, city manager and Phil Thornburg, Parks and Rec, help me understand, and these are city venues, this is the top of the La Solas Garage.
Correct.
Our new garage. So, anyone in the public can have a private birthday party? And again, happy birthday. Anyone can have a birthday party or any, anything that's private at no charge for any of these city venues? Is that what our policy is all across the city?
Well, there are certain venues that have a charge to them and others that don't. I think, as you recall, we had this one out on the market with some sort of a fee attached to it, and it wasn't getting any use. So, in order to generate some use, this is before you tonight because it's a private party that intends to serve alcohol in a public place. But, you know, Phil would be the one to have a more thorough conversation with about pricing of our venues. But when we had a price attached to this one, it wasn't getting any use. And so, that's why at this point, we're just trying to get some excitement around and get it activated. Correct.
Get it activated. So, it depends on the venue, then? In this city, there is no blanket policy for all of our public venues?
I don't believe so. Let me... Yeah, no, I don't believe there is.
Mr. Thornburg?
Let's let Phil address it more comprehensively.
Good evening. So, at this point, Commissioner, we... Anything that's an outdoor event goes through our process. And depending on what's going to happen there, it can be administratively or it comes to the commission. In this case, since there is alcohol involved, it comes to commission. If there's road closures, it would also come to commission. Some are done administratively. But to answer your question, we don't have specific fees for different sites in the city. So, all of our public spaces that are outdoor events come through us. So, we have some that are open to the general public, some that are by invitation only, some that you pay to pay. You know, it could be fenced off, and you have to pay to get in. And some, in this case, that are private events that are only invitation-only. So, that's... We handle them all the same way at this point, that they all just come through our process. They pay the application fee, and then any city services as well. And in this case, they would pay, of course, for the parking at the garage.
Okay. I guess that was news to me. I didn't realize that we do that for, you know, private events and that we don't have a user fee. Is that customary, Phil, do you know, in other cities? Is this similar in other cities?
It varies. I know there's, you know, a few years ago, we did a study. And then I think even Sarah Spurlock did one more recently for beach and what other cities were charging for the beach usage. And it varies all over the, you know, I mean, some charge, some charge a lot, some charge very little. So, it, you know, it can vary depending on what the city wants to do. I don't think there's a common thread with any of the cities around.
Okay, thank you very much. I was just... I'm glad to get that education. I thank you. And again, you look great for your age. I won't tell everyone... Oh, maybe I did already tell everyone how old you are.
Well, maybe you can have your 50th birthday party.
You know, I'm going to mark my calendar in a few years, and I'm hopefully going to be able to do that. Thank you so much. Again, happy birthday. Thank you, that's it. I will move the item. I will move the item.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
How old is she?
50.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
She's aged five years.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the motion is approved. All the consent agenda items are now approved. Moving forward to M 1, motion approving an application for temporary beach license, outdoor event, and extended road closures guarding greater Fort Lauderdale Pride for the Pride Fort Lauderdale Parade and Festival, a two-day event on Fort Lauderdale Beach. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Did someone second that?
Second.
I thought it was seconded, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the motion's approved. Motion approving an event agreement and music exemption with the Archdiocese of Miami, Inc. for St. Jerome Catholic Church and School Fall Festival 2021. We have one person who signed up to speak. It's Jay Adams, who's virtually participating. Is it just to respond to questions, Mr. Adams? I can't hear you.
Yeah, I think he's talking about a different item. He wants the CRA, Adam. This is M 2.
This is M 2.
It's an event. It's not Jay. It's not Jay.
Okay. But I do expect you to go to the St. Jerome Festival. Okay.
And Chantel's birthday party, if you can. Thank you.
It's not a private party.
But we'll give you a scheduled event, Adam.
And then we'll see you at the Pride Festival in November as well.
And then we'll see you at the Pride Festival in November as well.
Thank you, Jay.
Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the, call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and M2 is approved. M3, motion approving event agreements and extended road closures beyond 10 a.m. on the Barrier Island with Wildside Foundation for the 8th Annual Fort Lauderdale Jingle Bell Jog and the 15th Annual Fort Lauderdale 13.1 Half Marathon and 10K. Commissioner Glassman, I assume you'll be at the head of the line?
I'll probably be finishing first and then both races, actually. Yes, thank you.
Anyone have any questions regarding this? I once did a mini marathon.
How many?
I did one.
Okay.
I was determined not to come last.
We did that one in Middle River that time, remember? With Holmesy, remember we did that one?
Which one?
We did the run over in Middle River.
I did the run.
Captain Barrett, you and I.
Yes, I did the 3, the 5K.
I walked and you ran.
That's nice.
You know what? I made it through.
I'd like to move this item.
Would you?
Yeah, I would. Thank you.
Second. Well, move it.
Move, and do I hear a second? I think Commissioner Sorensen seconded.
Second, yep.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and M3 is approved. Okay, so M4, this is a motion for discussion. City Commission requests review, RK Center Mix Use Parcel 1. M4, M5, and M6 are all related. A number of people have signed up to speak, some here for questions. So, I called this up. Did anybody else call this up beside myself?
I did, and I believe Commissioner Sorensen did as well.
Okay, so I'll defer to, we'll start with the district commissioner, Commissioner Glassman, would you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, one item of clarification I'd like to get, Alan, if that's okay, and this is also, I think, important to know for the public, because when we used to call up items that were approved either on a Level 2, and we didn't have to necessarily see it unless it was call-up, the language is very different in terms of the request for review. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually had to find that staff made an error, and then we had to set a de novo hearing, to hear this all over again. We had to explain why we felt there was an error in staff's finding. Now, language has changed very much, as we see in the CAM now and our own code, that we may adopt the motion to set a hearing to review the application if it's found that the new project is in an area which, due to characteristics of the project and the surrounding area, requires additional review in order to ensure that development standards and criteria have been met, and to ensure that the area surrounding the development is protected from the impacts of the development. So that definitely seems like a different threshold than what we used to operate under. So my question is this, because I've been talking to the folks on this project now for about two years, so they're not grandfathered in with the original language. In other words, when they began the process, for us to call it up and to have a de novo hearing, the language was much stricter, much more restricted. Now it's not, but I'm wondering why they're falling under the new language when they began the process under the old language?
Because this is a procedural issue, the call-up is occurring now. So if you were, for example, to grant a de novo hearing to occur within 60 days, they would, based on the language of the ULDR, the prior code that was applying to them with regards to the specifications for their projects and their requirements, would apply. That isn't, but that's for modification and amendments to site plans, that would apply, the old code would apply. But from a procedural standpoint, the call-up is occurring now, it's under the new standard, so that would apply today.
Okay.
So you're correct that that stricter, that stricter call-up standard has been repealed, it's gone, and now the one you stated is the correct one and applicable tonight.
Okay, so they weren't grandfathered in under the old language?
Not for that procedural call-up, no.
Okay, that helps me understand that, thank you. So, Mayor, this is one of the reasons that I did call this up, and again, several, this is a large project, but I do want to say that in the two years that I've been meeting with the applicant, just about every question that I've had, every, you know, every point that I wanted to make has been really satisfied on this project. I did want to hear maybe a little bit more, and I felt it was important, because it is a project of significance in the city, that the public should have a right to at least hear a little bit more about it. Because many times folks say, oh, something gets approved by staff, or it just maybe makes it to planning and zoning as a Level 3, we don't hear it, we don't see it, and the public says, well, you're sneaking something through. So I just want to make sure that people don't feel that we're sneaking something through. And then coincidentally, and ironically, I might add, we just spent about seven hours on 3.3 acres. A lot of folks from the neighborhood had brought up concerns, very focused on the one-stop-shop site, and yet in that same neighborhood, on the northern end of the neighborhood, we have this project, and on the south end of the project, we have Fat City East and West. So while the, some people, some people, not all, in the neighborhood have been so laser-focused on 3.3 acres, and 78% of it, which we're hoping to make open space green, they just haven't even said peep about this. So I guess it's a good thing, because I have really heard nothing. And I know that I asked the applicant to go to all of the surrounding neighborhoods, not just the immediately surrounding neighborhoods like Flagler Village or across the street, Victoria Park, and I know they've done an excellent job in reaching out to South Middle River, Lake Ridge, everyone along the Sunrise Corral, Progressive Village, and I thank them for that. But I did want to just maybe hear from the applicant a few moments about how we're addressing the traffic concerns. We had a, we had a virtual meeting with FDOT, because there were some changes now coming to the Sunrise Boulevard curve there and Federal Highway. I want to make sure those things have all been met, and all of the infrastructure language that we've all read in the backup, I'm very happy to see that the applicant will be doing a lot of infrastructure. I did want to know, though, from Public Works, if we felt that the connecting infrastructure, though, to the site was also going to be impacted. And those are really the only questions I have. I think it's, I think it's just really developed over the last two years as a, as a very smart-looking entrance to our downtown. This will be our signature entrance, the north entrance to our downtown, and it will certainly, it will certainly make a statement. I do really love the large open space plaza area, and I think it's met all of the criteria as I review it, in terms of what we should be looking at, and I agree with staff analysis on everything that's been mentioned here, in terms of quality of architecture, building design, height, length, floor plate size, parking podium, tower separation, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I just have those questions. I'd like to hear from the applicant about all of the FDOT changes that are coming to that corner, and the ingress and egress from the site, and then if Public Works could just address the adequacy requirement, and I'm not talking about all of the replacement, because I believe that the applicant's going to be replacing about 2,300 linear feet of the gravity sewer and enlarging the pipe, but I want to hear how we feel about the connecting areas outside of the direct site, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, so who do you want to hear from first?
Maybe the applicant, just to address, you know, the FDOT issues, the ingress/egress, the infrastructure, you know.
Okay, so, so this, so that we stay on message here.
Yes.
Today, we are making a determination as to whether or not the new project is in an area which, due to the characteristics of the project and the surrounding area, requires additional review in order to ensure that development standards and criteria have been met, and, too, to ensure that the area surrounding the development is protected from the impacts of the development. So if we, if as a commission, we determine that these two criteria need further examination, then the call-up will require a de novo hearing, which is not tonight, but it's, it will be, the de novo hearing will be another night, it will be scheduled and advertised, and at that time, the applicant can make a presentation, a full presentation, and allow the commission to make a decision whether or not the project should go forward as submitted. All right? So, your question is, what's your first question to the applicant then?
I would just love to hear from the applicant about the discussions in terms of the FDOT proposals and the changes, and how that will impact the site, and then any of the other changes that have been made in terms of the ingress and the egress?
Certainly, Commissioner Glassman. I just need a little technical help to get to my graphics. It's not a...
We had a little bit of that problem this afternoon, too. And by the way, Chris, while we're taking a little bit of a break, I did receive a lot of text messages today from folks that were trying to view everything, and they, they're starting to get a little anxious about the fact that if they want to watch from home, there's always seems to be technical difficulties.
The only thing we can attribute what was thought to be technical difficulties today was that period of time that we left to go to the closed door. We did not have a functioning feed during that period of time, but we've had no outages on the web, YouTube, Channel 78, we've had no outages that we're aware of today.
Okay, thank you.
And we do need a faster laptop at the podium, if the presentations are going to be as graphic as the ones that we saw today are. So that, for the commission's benefit, that is probably a little bit on us, that we had the slowdown of the, of the computer today.
I apologize, Mayor. Commissioner Glassman, I'm going to try to scroll through. There we go. Commissioner Glassman, to answer your question, I didn't want to be presumptuous that we would be talking about FDOT first, so it's later on in the presentation. So we're sure that everyone is familiar with the three parcels of land, they're shown on the aerial right here. The large parcel on which Sears sits today is five and a half acres, and then there are the two one-acre parcels on the south side of Ninth, which are currently vacant. With respect to your question, Commissioner Glassman, regarding FDOT and access, as we've shared with you...
Are we supposed to be looking at these like?
No, I was going to answer Commissioner Glassman's question.
Not a speed reader.
You did not.
But they're just pictures, you should consider a speed viewer.
Speed, okay.
Sort of like when they used to have the subliminal messages?
Yeah.
Pretty, right? With respect to the coordination, not only with the City of Fort Lauderdale Transportation and Mobility Department, Cities Outscans Consultant and FDOT, as you all, and I think many of our neighbors are aware, as we've continued to give progress reports, the site was studied in terms of egress and design. One of the enhancements that was made early on in the site design was to put two turn lanes on US1, so that if one is heading to the south, in addition to FDOT's committed plans to add another third southbound turn lane, we are also dedicating a turn lane for ingress, which is the sole point of ingress or egress on US1. Today, you probably are aware, there are many points of conflict on the property. The current, the current property has three ingress and egress points on Sunrise Boulevard, it has three also on Federal Highway, and then two which are on Northeast Fifth and Flagler Drive. So Commissioner, with respect to...
So you think that restricting the number of inlets into the site is going to help the flow of traffic?
We think it will. First of all, we're dedicating a turn lane so that the travel ways will not be affected, because people will have the opportunity, if they intend to come in from Federal Highway, to get out of the three lanes which are going southbound.
Right, I see that. But you notice that you have to go into traffic, if you're coming east on Sunrise Boulevard, your car has to go into traffic before you get to that dedicated turn lane.
That is correct, which is why there is also an additional turn lane. There are three eastbound travel lanes on Sunrise Boulevard today. By dedicating a 250-foot additional eastbound sunrise turn lane, we are changing the pattern or the behavior that exists today. Right now, if you want to come around that bend and start to go south on Federal Highway, and that has that yield stop sign, you're backing up cars.
Actually, you're not, because when you, I drive that all the time. When you take that right-hand turn, you are in your own dedicated lane.
Correct.
Right.
So now you get to make the decision earlier.
No, but I'm saying, you already, we already have a dedicated lane there, you're taking a right-hand turn. What are you, what are you actually adding here?
We are...
Help me out here?
We are... Yes, certainly.
My name is Pramod Chadri, I'm the consultant.
Can you speak into the, speak into the microphone?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So when you're traveling eastbound on Sunrise, if you have the through vehicles queued up over there, they don't, the right turners, the eastbound right turners, they don't get the opportunity to make that right turn, so they are stacked behind the through vehicles. Right now, yes, there is a channel there, but once you have three or four vehicles queued up at the intersection during the red signal, they are not able to go into and make that right turn. So once we extend, when we provide that right turn lane, which is 250 foot long, they will be able to get into that turn lane way earlier.
Right, but, once they're in that turn lane?
Yes.
They're back into traffic again. Your, your additional lane on Federal Highway here doesn't begin, you, it doesn't, it's not connected, there's no continuous connection between that blue arrow on the top and the blue arrow entering into the site. You have to go back into traffic, which could be backed up, so now your Sunrise Boulevard connection is going to be backed up.
Up.
Right now, you have a dedicated lane that, that avoids having to go into traffic on US1. You're taking that away.
Yeah, but that dedicated lane is only after you have entered that channelized area. Before that, it is not. So once you get into that channelized movement?
Right.
That's when you have your own lane that you are able to flow south without any hindrance, but then it does create other operational issues there, because that traffic might be changing lanes and all those things, and that's what DOT has come up with the improvement, where they had earlier planned to have that right turn movement signalized. It's not going to be a free flow through, because the predominant movement at that intersection is your westbound left, which is very heavy, and that backs up. So they are proposing a third turn lane, westbound, and kind of making that three through left turn lanes free, flow freely southbound. So that's why they have to now stop that right turn movement from having a free flow, because it's a safety concern also, and also it was hindering the capacity of the intersection by not being able to have those three turn lanes.
Right, but I don't think you're answering my question. When you're coming, going east on Sunrise Boulevard and you take that right, you have, in order to get into that lane that you're creating with the blue arrow on Federal Highway, you have to go back into traffic. I don't see where there's a continuous lane where you can avoid the Federal Highway traffic. Am I not looking at your diagram correctly?
Mayor, I think, I think what you're talking about is people that are westbound to head south, merging with eastbound to head south, right after the triangle. So when they're all coming to the point, so what you, what you have today is two lanes from, if you're westbound and you're going to head south on US1...
Not going westbound, going eastbound.
Correct, but your concern is if there's traffic that is going to be coming west to south, and they're all getting to that bottleneck at the same time?
Correct.
They're, today, they're converging in two lanes, that right turn is the third lane, which merges into the second.
But no, it doesn't merge. It's its own dedicated lane, up until you get to the traffic.
The right, the right turn lane, yeah. The right turn lane merges with the people that are headed southbound from, from east and west.
Yes, but it's its own dedicated lane.
Yeah, but the, but the same, the same pattern happens here with an additional lane that you have today, where the turn lane and the, and the furthest southbound lane from west to west to south, they all merge. You're doing it today, you're, what's proposed is the same movement with an additional lane from FDOT. So our point is, the stacking on westbound, Sunrise headed west, is better with the additional 250 feet, and then anybody that's looking to enter our project on the main curb cut of US1 will have an additional lane that we've, we've dedicated along Federal Highway.
Right, but you can't pick that lane up yet until you merge into the traffic, and then you can go back and take advantage of that extra lane that you, that you've created. You can't, there's no continuous flow from Sunrise Boulevard into the, into the lane that you created on Federal Highway. You have to go back into traffic, which could possibly be jammed up, and you're just kind of stuck until the traffic flows, even with the extra lane that's, that FDOT's creating. Anyway, we, I'm just pointing that out.
And Mayor, we're not, I think FDOT looked for that additional turn lane for the south Federal Highway traffic in general. We were not intending that the turn lane was dedicated for the one entry point to the proposed project. for the one entry point to the proposed project. With respect to additional turn lanes, again, as we head further south, Commissioner Glassman, there is also, leading up to the intersection of Northeast Ninth Street, we've also dedicated a full turn lane. So that if one is going to turn west onto Ninth, whether to come into RK Centers, which does have a does have a primary vehicular entrance point at that location, they are able, again, to get out of the travel lanes on US-1. And once they turn onto Ninth Street, also able to enter a turn lane at that location. Commissioner Glassman, with respect to entry points and points of egress and entry, we have, as we've shared with you, deliberately tried to disperse vehicular activity throughout the property, noting the Sunrise Boulevard and Federal Highway is, you know, higher capacity, and have done so not only with the entrance point off of Ninth, there is also a service point off of Northeast Fifth Avenue. And then up on Flagler Drive, again, in coordination with the city and also with FDOT, we have a right in, right out. That's not a very highly trafficked street, but in order to not create the situation where someone was trying to come out on Flagler and turn south, we did disperse it at that location.
You're saying that Flagler is not a highly trafficked street? When was the last time you drove on Flagler?
A lot, actually.
Yeah, I drive it every day.
Mm-hmm.
And it's always got lots of cars on it.
There are cars. And again, we carefully studied what might be the appropriate movement so that we didn't didn't create conflicts.
Okay.
Courtney, can I can I just ask you a question?
Certainly, Commissioner.
Thanks. So and and Mayor, correction if I'm wrong, but if I'm if I think I'm understanding what you're saying, it makes sense to me. And it's so Courtney, the the blue arrow on Sunrise, right, that heads east?
Right.
If that blue arrow lane or continue to go kind of go around the turn there and south, and then cut through the green grassy area to connect to the other blue arrow that then goes into the property, I think that's what the mayor is suggesting.
I think that's what the mayor was suggesting.
Yeah. Because that way, you're not having to merge into any oncoming traffic. You've got your own lane that you can stay in and enter the property.
Understood. I wonder, and I guess we would have to ask the traffic engineers, if you're not intending to come to the property, but you're going to work downtown, and you are you come around the corner, and you're in a turn lane that is out that's going to lead you into the property, are you going to be able to continue to go south easily? Or are you already?
You can go into you can merge into that third lane.
Yeah, you'd have.
Exactly.
But but the thing is, how else do you get into the property? You're not going to get into the property by flat. Let's say you're coming east on Sunrise. How do you enter the property?
If you're coming east on Sunrise, you can actually go south on Third, is the point where if you.
Have you ever gone to that intersection at by the tracks? It's it's very, very dangerous. Anyway.
I have. But but a lot of people who I know who go downtown coming east on Sunrise choose to the to find Third Avenue.
But Mayor, won't a lot of this also depend on the signalization that you'll have before people are making that that left-hand turn off of Sunrise to head south on Federal Highway? Won't that alleviate some of that issue with what you're saying is up above the heading east on Sunrise to come around that corner? Won't those people be wouldn't that be coordinated with the signalization on Sunrise?
Well, actually, you avoid some of the signalization because of that extra lane that they're creating on Sunrise. So you can you can skip the the traffic light, and you come south. And now, you know, you're kind of now you're now now you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like me to go back to that? I was trying to get an aerial for you, Mayor.
Trying to distract you, Mayor.
Yeah.
It's been successful so far.
Look at all the images. The images, Mayor.
What my big concern here is that we have to learn from our mistakes, okay? If you look at the Trader Joe's Shopping Plaza, we have one way in, one way out. It's an absolute nightmare. And by and and just picking up on this one issue that the that Commissioner Glassman is talking about, and you raised, oh, well, we're reducing the number of of ways to get in and out of here. Isn't that counterintuitive, knowing that when I get to speak, I'm going to bring out the fact that there are hundreds and hundreds of cars at peak time per hour that are now going to be having that we're going to have to deal with? I think that when we when Ben Rogers gets up here to speak, he will he will disclose to us what the traffic count is going to be after the site. And I'm just wondering how we're going to be able to accommodate those hundreds of cars per hour on these on these bottlenecks that you're creating because you're reducing the number of ways inside and out.
Which reduces vehicular conflict and does change. People are not going to stop in long stretches on US-1 or Sunrise, which does create bottlenecks and backup. That is why, understanding that we do need to do it right. There are projects that are, whether it's the Trader Joe's or the CIRC down on Seventeenth and Federal Highway, that did traditional traffic studies. And the reason that early on in the site plan process, we talked about having these additional dispersed entry points and turn lanes was not necessarily as was not actually, Pramod will tell us, as a result of triggering that condition. It was tried. It was to design so that there can be a safe flow, so that if you are coming to the property, you're not making a hard, you know, turn to the west into the property at any of its points. That's why the traffic study, which was done with pre, you know, pre-COVID counts, actual accounts, was exhaustively examined. And we spent about 14 months making sure that whether it's distribution, future growth, right in, right out, how does that work, was discussed with all of the professionals who devoted a huge amount of time to recommending approval, not only of the overall study, which also took into account the nearby projects, those in the pipeline and approved, so that we actually would be very comprehensive in the ultimate analysis and design.
Well, but you see, Courtney, those same experts told us Trader Joe's was was considered appropriate. And empirically, we're discovering that it's a nightmare. And now we're having to deal with another project where Publix looks to locate just a few a few doors up from that shopping center. And again, limited access in and out is going to create bottlenecks that that we're hoping that you could anticipate in terms of your traffic flow design. Because by limiting the number of entry points and exit points, and considering the the amount of vehicular traffic that is predicted for the site, I just, you know, as a as a driver in the city for almost 40 years, I just know that this is you're begging for trouble. But anyway, go ahead.
Commissioner Glassman, did I answer your questions on that point?
Yes. And Mayor, the thing I would say is a little bit different here, and as opposed to Trader Joe's, is Trader Joe's, when you're heading south on Federal, and you want to make that left to cross into Trader Joe's, the the queue there is just so tiny, maybe four cars, five cars. I don't think we're going to have that issue here. But that, to me, is the problem with making that left-hand turn heading south on Federal into Trader Joe's Plaza there. It's just.
Well, when we get to.
There's no there's no there's no ability to stack anything except four cars, maybe.
Right.
And that's why it spills out into the left lane away, you know, out of that out of that left-hand turn lane.
But when we do, when we get Mr. Rogers to talk about the traffic count, we're not talking about the same volume that's going in and out of the Trader Joe's Shopping Plaza. It's going to be significantly higher.
Yes, I agree. I just think that there's a little more room here.
I didn't mean to interrupt your.
No, that's okay. No, that's that's wonderful. Thank you. I really appreciate that. So the only other question I had, Mayor, was again, for Public Works to find out about the adequacy requirements. And I understand all of the new infrastructure that the applicant's going to be taking care of, which I think is terrific. But I just want to make sure that we're good on all the connections to the site, that we feel good about that as well, and not just the site and the improvements that the applicant's making. And I did have one just one question for Anthony, actually, after that. I just want to know why, on a project such as this, there's no public participation required. Is that because it's just a Level Two? I I I see you're nodding your head, yes. But maybe we should think about that going going forward that and I and I this is not to take anything away from the applicant. I know you guys did a great job with public participation, even though it was not required on this Level Two project. But I think maybe we, you know, we should revisit that going forward. But that's all. Thanks. So now, if I could just get that question about the adequacy and the capacity and the connections to the site, I'll be good. Thank you.
You mean condition and capacity? Condition of the of the underground infrastructure?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Thank you.
And Commissioner Glassman, if you don't mind, Commissioner Sorensen, you asked if I understood where the mayor was going in terms of cutting off that portion. I do understand the concept. We're verifying. I think that's actually owned by FDOT, that little.
Ah, that that green portion is?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know what we're talking about.
Good evening, Mayor.
Change this. Hold on a second, Alan. I don't know what you're talking about, since you changed the screen. What do you what?
It will be the continuation piece that you don't see.
Well, it's not owned by.
Now it's green now.
You folks own it.
I think a portion of it is.
Well, you have to come up to the podium to.
I believe.
Do you go back to the screen that we're referring to?
Certainly. FDOT is, as part of their plans, actually building out a portion of property in addition to what RK owns. So I believe the graphic is representing that. You're right. We we own our current boundary.
Yeah, you own that.
Right. But as part of their rebuild, FDOT is adding to that bulb.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
But I'm saying but I'm saying for to suggest that you cannot continue that that lane because FDOT owns it is not a correct statement.
I wasn't suggesting. I was actually thinking FDOT might be receptive. But I was just wanted to be accurate, Mayor, that what I believe you were looking at at that point in time, a portion of it may be owned by FDOT. I'm not suggesting they would be resistant or anything else. I was just clarifying.
Okay.
And Courtney, one other thought there is just you see that the so the blue arrow going into the facility into the property, then just south of that, you see another little bulb out, right?
Correct.
So it seems like if I'm do I egress from that area? In other words, can I go eastbound and then southbound out of the property?
You can.
Yeah. So a question there. And again, it might be traffic reasons that I'm not smart on. But if that bulb out went away on the southern portion there, could you just more easily get into your own dedicated lane and not have to merge more fully into traffic?
I understand the question. I will ask the traffic engineer.
Yeah. Thanks. And then I'm assuming, Courtney, the the arrow above that second bulb out.
Yep.
Is that a mandatory right turn into the property? You can't. In other words, you want you can't go straight there because the bulb out's there. And I'm assuming if the bulb out, the southern bulb out was removed, you still want to make that a forcing right turning action? So again, that's traffic questions that I don't know. But just some thoughts.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner.
Alan, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner is Alan Dodd, Director of Public Works.
Do you want to go back with your line?
Oh, if you have, that would be good. So for this project, the analysis looked at two parts, the water and then the wastewater. The water infrastructure there is sufficient and meets the capacity necessary for the improvements of, which wouldn't bring 1.192 million gallons per day increase in the system. On the wastewater side, however, there's an increase of 0.145 million gallons per day. And analysis shows that it was not sufficient to meet the current capacity of the system. And so the the improvements that will be needed are to upsize 2,290 linear feet of gravity mains on Northeast Fifth Street from a 10-inch to a 14-inch pipe, and then 600 linear feet of 15-inch gravity main on Northeast Sixth Street from 15 inches to 18 inches. In addition, it the area is currently serviced by the 821 pump station, which does not have the capacity to handle the additional flows. However, there's a new pump station, 824, which is in our CIP, and that is scheduled to be completed by December of 2022. And that will provide the additional capacity for both this development and for some other developments that will be occurring in the area. So overall, we do have sufficient capacity once those are completed.
Is there capacity at the plant?
There is capacity at the plant. Right now, the total permitted capacity for wastewater is 48 million gallons per day. And we're operating at around 40.65 billion gallons per day. So that 0.145 billion gallons per day is still well within the the capacity of the systems.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I so I just want to make sure then. So you feel comfortable with the condition and capacity, not only with what the applicant's replacing on site, but in the immediate vicinity also?
Yes, with with the completion of the 824 pump station.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question, Commissioner.
Yes.
What was it that what was it that compelled you to call this up based on these criteria that you feel that additional review in order to ensure development standards and criteria have been met? What made you want to bring it to the commission level?
Well, I think you can call it up. I believe that those requirements are actually if we were to set a hearing, correct? Or?
Right.
I called it up because I did think a project of this, you know, magnitude, again, I'm going to go back to the laser focus of the immediate neighborhood on 3.3 acres. And is anyone here from Flagler Village this evening?
I live close to it.
That's my point. This is the entrance to Flagler Village. And this is quite quite a significant project. I'm not saying that I, you know, have objections to it. But I just felt that it needed to be brought to the public's attention, that we can ask these kinds of questions, that people can see it. Because I don't know about you, but I always hear this rumbling that things happen without people knowing, all these secret meetings, all this behind-the-scenes stuff. So, you know.
Stop doing it.
Stop doing it. So I just want to make sure.
It's always the same person that's having the meetings.
So what I'm saying here is, we're being as transparent as possible. We've invited everyone by putting it on the agenda. Everyone is obviously very happy. So that's a great thing. But again, to answer your question, Mayor, it deserved to be just shown to the public. And again, I believe that the requirements that you, you know, mentioned, the request for review, is if we set a de novo hearing. But they weren't the requirements or the request for review criteria just for us to call it up and discuss it, right?
Yes, that is correct. Okay, so Commissioner Sorensen, you also called it up. Would you like to?
Yeah.
Proceed.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Commissioner Glassman hit most of my questions. The only additional one in this slide is actually exactly where I wanted to go, is Courtney wanted to, when we look at the kind of if we look at number three here on the intersection, number three to number 15, that portion of Sunrise, I mean, there's, you know, it's intense, heavy traffic. I just wanted to kind of dig into a little bit of the impact, especially at that that number 15 intersection. What's give us a, you know, a public understanding of kind of what that impact, traffic impact is. Please.
Certainly, Commissioner. With respect to the intersection three, and Pramod Chuhari is here, who's our traffic engineer, who the commission heard from, we actually, with the improvements and carefully located circulation patterns and entry points around the three properties, it is projected that the level of service at three, when you take today's conditions, background traffic, which I learned means factoring in committed projects, and then the three RK Centers projects, three actually is projected to improve in its level of service by 2028, with with all of the improvements that both the RK team and FDOT are doing. One of FDOT's follow-up items also is they are going to continue, and I think you may have mentioned it, Commissioner Glassman, to work on improved. have mentioned it, Commissioner Glassman, to work on improved signal timing after all these improvements are implemented. And with respect to, and with respect to 15, I believe similarly, we, huh?
Very minimal impact.
Yeah, it has a, we, we actually have a very minimal impact on the intersection of Sunrise and 15th. It seems as if there's some from other developments in the area, again, that background traffic that was factored in.
Okay. And, and then the, kind of, if you go back to that other slide where we were, the mayor, we were looking at the blue lines, and, yeah, the, on the Sunrise Boulevard, the blue line where you hit, you, you kind of go southeast on that turning, is that, there's not a signal there at that, the end of that arrow, is there at that bulb out?
There is not an actual signal. Some of the, I'm sorry, some of the plans that we've seen from FDOT, it looks like they're dropping in a, a stop sign. What's there today is actually the large overhead FDOT sign and, and a sidewalk on, on the RK property.
Okay. Yeah, and that's what, that's what I was wondering, is that a stop sign? Is that a yield sign? Is that a signal? So you're saying probably a stop sign, if, if that bulb out remains?
Yes. I've definitely seen stop. I know they've said yield. We, we can clarify that with FDOT, but yes, there, there is a pause, if you will.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, Courtney. Thanks, Mayor. That's all I have.
Courtney, I've got a, Mayor, I've got a quick follow-up question there if I can, just because that doesn't make any sense, a stop sign at that location. So that's actually been something that's been proposed?
We have seen it on the graphics that were provided by FDOT.
I could not imagine if every car had to stop there.
Where, at the entrance there?
No, it's the, the turning movement from Sunrise Boulevard eastbound onto the South Borough Highway, there can be, you can't have a stop sign.
City manager, Promod, who's been having the most recent conversations, there absolutely was a stop sign on their plans. He has shared in follow-up conversations, they're evaluating, signaling that, which...
Okay, yeah, stop sign there doesn't make any sense.
I understand.
Again, and, and just so we're clear, Courtney, you're going to explore that idea of cutting back the bulb out and having, you know, a, a, a smooth turn into that new lane?
Can we explore it?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Let me ask you a question, Courtney.
Yep.
Since we're talking about the blue lines not being continuous, right?
Right.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
How did we get here? Why is the bulb out there? Because right now, the mayor says he comes down, sorry, as I come down, I don't remember if I merge or if I keep going.
You don't merge, you're in your own dedicated lane right now.
But I don't remember, so I'm trusting what you're saying. So now, that's being taken away, you're saying, right?
You're saying, well, this...
But, but they're adding stretches for stacking if, if need be, right?
It's going to end up stacking, correct?
So even if it continued to me, if it continued, everybody's not going into the property, as, as Commissioner Glassman said, then you get a lot of people over here now trying to get back over and merge back into the third yellow lane, which also is a turning lane as well, am I correct? Into that property.
The yellow lane is, is a traditional travel way, that continues...
Turn also into the property from that lane, right? Like you said, it was two turning lanes into the property.
Two, I was referring Commissioner McKenzie to the north and the south, two locations, two locations of turning lanes.
Two blues?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, again, because I come this way too, but I don't know if there's a stop sign there or whatever, but I know you don't, you don't really stop, you look to the left, no traffic, you keep rolling.
Well, the, the concern that I have is that people trying to come home, say they're coming off of 95, and they're trying to, trying to get into this place, and it's 5:30, and there's thousands of cars converging at this triangle here, and, and, you know, several hundred people live here, and they're going to try to come around, and they're stuck here because they got to wait now for all this traffic to come south. If they had their own dedicated lane, they could come right in, because to come in this way is really complicated. To come in through Flagler is very complicated. To take a right and then a left, I mean, it's just, well, this just sort of begs the next question, and could you, Ben, are you available?
Yeah.
To talk about the, the traffic count?
And I agree with that, but here's, here's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah.
All these projects we've approved, right? We ask these same questions about all these people that are going to live here. And what I've found, and what I think we have found collectively is, the people that move into this type of development aren't coming from out west in the evening, they're coming downtown because they're going to work, live, and play here. They're not the culprits. There's other folks who are trying to navigate somewhere else that's trying to do this, you know? Because you really don't leave City of Fort Lauderdale, you go to Wood Manor, but that's really contiguous. I don't leave the city of Fort Lauderdale that much. Stephen doesn't, Heather doesn't, Ben doesn't.
So let's say they work downtown. Say they work downtown.
Uh-huh.
The way they're going to get home is, you either come up Flagler...
Right.
Take a right into the property, or you go down Ninth Street and go into the property, keeping in mind that these are two-lane roads.
And I agree with your first part, I'm saying, but I don't think these people are the ones we've got to worry about.
No, but I'm just saying they're two-lane roads.
Yeah.
These roads are not intended, I want Ben, where's Ben? Ben, could you please give us a little presentation on the traffic count that...
Then finish that when you finish, I want to hear what you got to say. Thank you.
Don't keep showing us pretty pictures.
He wants that blue and green thing.
Good evening, Mayor.
Well, he fixed it.
Yeah, he fixed it, yeah.
Ben Rogers, Transportation Mobility. Mayor, what is the specific question?
What is the traffic count that you estimate that this, that this project will generate at peak hours?
Yeah, so I think one thing to remind the commission of is that the city, and specifically Transportation Mobility, hires a third-party traffic engineer on our behalf to review the information that the developer puts together, and then they provide us with feedback and comfort level of their information. So we have our consultant on the line as well, so I'll go ahead and give you a first stat, but if you want a deeper understanding, I can introduce our traffic engineer from Kim Lee Horn.
Okay, that's fine.
So the first, to, to the trips, there's, there's a net impact of new trips, around 3,100, 3,100 trips per day, about 450 AM and 134 PM. Now, the...
That's per hour?
Per hour, in the PM and AM, correct. Now, the important thing to note here is that's net new trips, right? Or net trips, that's not proposed trips, that's the difference of proposed less existing.
Okay, so when, all right, let me stop you there. So when he says existing, that's the theoretical amount of traffic that would be generated in a shopping plaza with that number of square feet for that plaza. But we all know that that particular plaza does not generate anywhere near the amount of trips that it is attributed to it because of the nature of the shopping center. I don't think they'd have 400 cars in a month going into Sears. So is that what you're telling us?
That, that's my understanding, that there's 11,000 proposed trips, and they're getting about 7,800 credited trips from the existing use.
All right, so the proposed trips for this site per day is 11,000?
Correct.
11,000?
1100 or 11,000?
11,000.
11,000 per day? And that's not happening, you know, consistently between, you know, 24-hour period, there are peak periods. So what's the peak period count?
So if we do the, the AM peak hour trip, you have 679 AM with a 230 credit to give you a net of 449.
No, forget the credit.
Okay, 679.
679.
Per hour.
And the AM peak hour.
Imagine 800 cars coming out at 8 o'clock in the morning, in addition to all the other cars that are, that are traveling around.
Yeah, but it's going to change when you change the development, am I correct?
Well, we're just, we're just describing what this development will generate.
Okay.
That's all we're talking about.
So they're going to generate how many total trips?
11,000 per day.
Per day. But they're not coming at the same time.
They're not coming at the same time. So he just said it's, in the peak hours, it's almost 800. Anyway.
It's almost, almost 700 in the AM peak, and, and to clarify, that's for all three parcels combined.
All three parcels, yeah.
Because a lot of times when we have these, especially these, these drawn-out traffic issue deals, I circle back later on, and I look for those, those days where I'm seeing these 11,000 cars, or 639 in one hour, I just don't see them coming in and out of those developments. I see a lot of cars on the street. I don't see them coming in. I, I go right here to Flagler Village, Andrews and Sis Trunk, those, those two buildings on the, on the north side, northwest side.
Andrews and Sis Trunk.
And I'm always looking for cars. I never see, I see people walking and talking.
Walkable neighborhood.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but I never, I never see, even across the street, I don't see the cars. So I'm, I'm not saying they're, they're not there, but I do see tons of cars on Sis Trunk, but I don't see them going in and out of these residential units.
I'm just saying it raises grave concerns.
Well, I agree. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying...
This, this, this is a very intense development, and I'm not sure that the weight of this development can be sustained by the infrastructure that we have in place. And when I talk about infrastructure, I'm not talking about underground infrastructure, I'm talking about the surface infrastructure. We have two-lane roads surrounding it on two sides, and we have three, a three-lane road on the north side and a three-lane road on the east side. And I'm just saying that we're begging for trouble if, once this project is complete with all the retail and all the residential. How many units are we looking at here?
Units?
What's the total number of units?
Very close.
Almost 1,000 units.
On seven and a half acres.
I, I'm not so much concerned about the units as, as I am concerned about the traffic on the street. The units, to me, I just don't see where you see that many people coming in. I mean, in Stephen's building, for example, my sister's building, I'm saying, you don't see that many people coming and going at the same time, but you do see a lot of people in front of your...
I do know that when I travel on Sunrise Boulevard, it's a...
It's traffic.
It's a nightmare.
It's traffic.
Coming from somewhere.
I agree with that, but they're not going to be going in and out of the 954 residential units. I just, I, I just find that hard to believe. Especially when I, when I circle back and I look at all these projects, I mean, even the Arburge, I don't see that many cars coming in and out of the residential units, but I see tons of cars on A1A.
Well, a lot of people don't work who live at Arburge.
And, hold on, but I think this is, the same thing's happening, and then you look over here on 17th Street, Carsway and Federal, where we had the, the new development. I go over there, I sit, I don't see 600-something cars going in and out of the residential units, but I see 600-something cars passing that project per hour, and I'm one of them.
All right, well, is Kim Lee Horn on the line?
So I'm not...
Let's ask them.
...take away from, from what you're saying, I don't think they're going into the project, I think they're going past...
Well, all I know is that there's 1,000 people that are going to live here, excuse me, 1,000 units, it could be 2,000 people that are going to live here, and, you know, we go places.
Mayor, just a point, Alan, right here.
Who's talking?
Well, that's the city attorney. Give us a straight answer.
No, just to remind you tonight, all we're doing is, is determining whether we should have a de novo hearing.
Whether or not that...
We're sort of into the...
I, I know...
Issues of the hearing right now, so you may want to save that for the actual hearing.
Right, but I'm just saying, do, do we require additional review in order to ensure that development standards and criteria have been met, and that the surrounding the development is, whatever the area surrounding the development is, is protected from the impacts of the development? That's why I'm raising the issue of traffic. That's the only thing. Is Kim Lee Horn on the line?
Yes, IT, if you could unmute Omar Kanon.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is Omar Kanon with Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
Okay, I can't see you. Can we put him on the screen?
We couldn't see any of those people at, with the park today either.
No, that's...
I had a problem with that. I want to see who's talking at all times.
Okay.
So I agree with you.
Omar?
Good evening.
Hi, so tell us a little bit about the traffic capacity here, and how you, how you anticipate that this development will impact the, the area in and around the development.
So the traffic volumes that were mentioned are accurate. Those, those trips were distributed on the roadway network, and the 15-plus intersections were analyzed based on the city standards, and the, the delay results that were presented by the applicant are accurate.
So what were those?
The, the project does not significantly impact any of the adjacent intersections, and, and I attribute that to the number of driveways and the, the possible ways in and out of the project. They're not, they're not magnified at a single intersection or a single movement.
So you don't think that 800 cars an hour are going to impact the, the street traffic during rush hour?
Correct.
Oh, I must be a traffic engineer.
Must be.
What do you think, Stephen?
Okay.
When will you be leaving the commission?
Uh, if I get the right pay, I'll leave right now.
Okay, thank you. See who I could talk to.
Okay, I, I, thank you so much, Omar, and, and I have no further questions.
No, but you see, you see what I'm trying to say, because they're saying right now...
Say that you're...
Even, even you said, "I can't believe that pass is getting that much traffic right now." Me neither. However, you see tons of cars going by every morning, cutting and carrying on and doing what they do here in City of Fort Lauderdale.
At some point, we've got to realize that we have...
What do we realize, is what I'm saying?
At what point we have to realize that we are, that our roads can only achieve a certain amount of vehicular traffic and accommodate them in a, in a realistic way.
And I agree with you.
Whenever we do, whenever we do neighborhood surveys, for all the years that I've been on this commission, the number one, number one problem that's always pointed out is traffic. It's been that way since forever.
No, one time it was, we, we didn't have enough parks. Remember that time it came back along?
Now, we do.
Along, so...
2.7...
And traffic, what, traffic was it, it depends on who's in here talking about which project.
All I'm saying is, we've got to...
Like tonight, with the one stop, it was traffic. Now, tonight, not one of those persons or people or, 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 or voices are here to talk about this extreme amount of traffic you have encountered.
That shouldn't be the litmus test of this...
But most of the times, they're the ones saying, "Traffic." And I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, we're having a conversation.
I know, I know.
And I, I agree with you about the traffic, but I just don't think the project is creating the traffic.
You don't think that 11,000 cars a day is, is going to impact traffic in around the area?
I think traffic is traffic in every city I go to, in some cities I don't want to visit again, because you sit in traffic. Here, you just get in traffic.
Okay.
No, do it, not right now, when we leave here tonight, hold on a second, one more point. We leave here tonight, you pick any street, and you and I can go and skateboard down the middle of these streets right now, there's no traffic.
This is not a peak hour?
Mayor, as Stan said earlier, debunk debunk.
The bunk.
Now you're quoting Stan?
Yes, I am. He said debunk debunk.
Okay, well, I, I'm asking the questions because I also called it up. Does anyone else on the commission have any comments or questions? I cannot, I cannot move to have this reviewed, so it has to come from one of you folks. If you guys don't want to do it...
I don't want to do it.
Well, okay.
But it's up to, um...
Steve, what do you think?
It's up to the rest of you, I cannot move for it.
It's up to the young guy.
I, I have spoken to folks from every single neighborhood in and around this site, as I know that proponent has, and I have heard no issues from, from, from five different neighborhoods along the Sunrise Boulevard.
I've had, I've got an email.
You want me to call Stan?
I've received, I've received not one email about it.
Well, I'll be happy to share.
Please do, please do.
But that's not, again, that's not.
No, I understand.
...ometer of, of testing whether the project is meritorious or not.
I understand.
Have our own minds to think through. We, we.
Yes. But, but what you've just vetted this evening will be the same conversation that we will have if we have as a hearing.
I think so too.
The same exact conversation. We will, we, right, we will repeat it, we will hear from Kim Lee Horn, we will hear from the applicant, we will hear from Public Works, we will hear from, you know, transportation and mobility, we'll hear the exact same replay. So, what will we hear differently? And again, there is no one here from any of the five, that, I know you keep poo-pooing that, but it is significant. It is, it, it, it is, it is significant that there's no one here from five surrounding neighborhoods, even across the street. Anyone here from Victoria Park, anyone here from South Miller River, anyone here from Fat Village, you don't count, Chris. Anyone here, anyone, anyone, any.
Anthony's, Anthony's in Victoria Park.
Staff doesn't count, anyone here from Lake Ridge, anyone here from Middle River Terrace. I'm telling you, it does count, Mayor, because if there was an issue, you would hear it.
Be able to judge these things independently.
I am, that's why I called it up.
Whether or not the wind blows this way or that way.
Forget the wind, I, I can judge it independently, that's why I called it up, I was one of three of us that called it up, and I have received the answers from a staff that I have to rely on, and I've received the answers, and I know I'll get the same exact conversation if we set a de novo hearing.
No one wants to move.
I, I agree with him, but here's the problem I'm having.
Yes.
We haven't heard from the vice mayor, and I don't think Ben was able to complete his thoughts.
Well, I did, I asked if anyone else had any questions, so, Vice Mayor, do you have any comments on this?
My thoughts are that I avoid this intersection.
She's got.
Yeah, yes. And then sitting for too long.
Yeah, right.
Uh, I avoid this intersection anyway, so I will continue to avoid it, I don't take it, I take Ange, cuz it's a bad intersection and, and, um.
Even with eleven thousand more cars a day?
Right, so I think obviously adding one lane, hopefully that helps, I understand what you're talking about, the merging and everything, I, I think it's going to be an issue, but I think we have traffic issues around our city. I'll just look forward to, um, if this is built, that you guys can stop talking about Chick-fil-A and Publix in my district.
Ooh, debunk.
There you go, it's gonna make Chick-fil-A look like a desert.
Okay, we'll move on.
Debonk.
Uh, so this is with, let me go back to the agenda.
Where my brother Ben?
Yeah, thanks, no, I'm, I'm good, I asked all the questions, yes, this is gonna add to traffic in my view, and, uh, we've gotta continue to promote multimodal traffic solutions and signalization and so forth, so.
Why don't we bring back the scooters?
So as one of our staff.
What, Chris?
As one of our staff, staff.
I think the city attorney's working on that.
We have to make it painful for people before they want to get, um, public transportation. So I guess this is, this is allowing the city to further experience more pain before public transportation.
I, I don't think that's a fair statement, Mayor.
Yeah, I don't think I agree with that.
Yeah.
Uh, so what do we do here, uh, Mr. Boalow, since, uh, no motion is going to be tendered for, or moved for?
It carries down the path.
So can we just move on?
Move on. Yeah, there's no motion made or seconded.
You knew that, right? You knew that, didn't you?
I knew that, but I have to get a legal.
I like that.
So, okay, good luck. Uh, R one, appointment of board and committee members.
Probably wanna.
Please read the names.
Did we, um, do M five and M six separately, I know it's all the same.
I said, I said.
All three, okay.
All three, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, for the October fifth, uh, resolution for the Noise Control Advisory Committee. We have a couple of names brought forward from Commissioner Glassman, Chad McCory and Renee Quinn, and those will be on the October fifth resolution. For tonight's resolution, Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Christina Robinson, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Nuisance Abatement Board, Paula Yunka, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Public Art and Placement Board, Martha Gutierrez Steincamp, nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas, Michelle Howland, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and Sarah Glass, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And that rounds it out, Mayor.
Okay, someone, any additional names or nominations, there being none, someone like to introduce the, the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too and made a part here of, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and, uh, those individuals are now appointed to those boards and committees, and we really appreciate your commitment to the community. Thank you for the time and sacrifice that you are gonna put forth in participating on those boards, thank you again. Uh, R two, quasi judicial resolution for an alternative design of a twelve story mixed use and mixed income development with ground floor commercial space deviating from the downtown master plan standards for a minimum building tower setback and maximum floor plate size requirements related to Fat Village, six hundred North Andrews Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, Commissioner will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Vice Mayor, do you have any disclosures?
I do, four thirteen twenty one, I met with Robert Lockery and Peter Campbell, nine twenty twenty one, met with Robert Lockery.
Uh, Commissioner McKenzie?
Robert Lockery.
He gets around.
Yeah, he's a busy guy.
He's a guy.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, October fifth, twenty twenty, with Robert Lockery, and then Nectaria Chakas and Patrick Campbell on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Uh, Robert Lockery inclined.
Okay, I have several people signed up to speak, oh, and my disclosures are Mr. Lockery and his representatives. So I have Mr., uh, Campbell signed up to speak, uh, Mr. Lockery and Sandy Peesman, but I assume those are supportive of, of, okay. All right, there being no one else, um, Mr., um, uh, Fajardo, do you wanna give us a little summary as to what they're looking to do here? This is an affordable housing project, correct?
The same corridor I spoke about earlier.
What's that?
The same corridor that I spoke about earlier.
Yes, the same corner, finally, finally, finally. This is the one that the county owns the land. This will round out that corner.
Be great. I still don't see any cars over there, I see people. I'm telling you, I see people.
I see shades of.
I see dogs.
Um, Mr. Fajardo, can you explain what we, what we're trying to do here tonight?
Golf carts.
Good evening, Mayor, Anthony Fajardo, DSD. Um, the request in front of you is a deviation from the requirements of the ULDR based on the fact that this is an affordable housing project where the, uh, ULDR was changed to allow those deviations to occur as part of the process. So what you're approving tonight is that deviation as well as the, the project itself. Robert Lockery's here, he can definitely go through the, the, um, the request in more detail than I can, so I'd like to defer to him for those options.
All right, Mr. Lockery, where art thou?
He's right here.
He's getting around.
Just give us a quick summary of the setback, uh.
Sure, certainly.
What you're making.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Robert, Commissioners, Robert Lockery on behalf of the applicant. Yes, and as your staff report indicates, um, this project is being built on Broward County land, it's a project that I know the city has been looking forward to for a number of years. It's comprised of a hundred and ninety-five residential units, um, most of which are broken down into several different affordable and workforce categories, I'll go through that real quickly. Um, of the hundred and ninety-five units, um, forty units will be, um, rented at fifty percent of area mean income, a hundred and ten units at a hundred and twenty percent, and forty-five units at a hundred and forty percent, which is really market rate. Um, the two deviations, by the way, the project has been designed to meet all the new downtown master plan guidelines, even though it was in earlier, um, with two specific items that we're asking waivers for. First is a step, step back along Sistrunk, and where that's important is the building itself actually steps back further that would ordinarily be required for a building along Sistrunk or along any street. Specifically, um, the building wall or essentially the podium of a building from the center line is, is required to be at thirty-five feet. This building is actually set back an additional ten feet, forty-five feet, and that's because there's an extra turn lane at that intersection. So as a result, the overall building is already back forward, so then when you go up to the podium and you step the building back a little bit further, the step back is at seven feet versus twelve. So where the code would say you do twelve, we're only doing seven, but what I want you to all realize is the impact of that is still that the step back that you get if you were looking down the street is even more so than you would get if it was an ordinarily compliant provision. Specifically, our step back from the center line of the street is fifty-two feet, where otherwise it would be forty-seven feet.
Is this going to abbreviate the, the landscaping perimeter around the building?
No, it is not, in fact, the landscaping provided is, um, twenty-five thousand square feet, um, of which nine thousand is at grade, where only five thousand is required, so it's almost double what's required.
Right, but as far as the width of it is.
No, no, we still meet all those dimensional requirements, and that, Mayor, is the reason why the building is pushed back further, even though there's a turn lane.
Okay.
Um, in addition, the second item is we have one tower instead of two towers, if we did two towers, we'd meet that floor plate. We simply joined the two of the towers at a corner, which we think also provides a really good design element along, at that corner of Sistrunk and Andrews, which is a primary corner, as well as providing the, allowing the building to be built in an affordable manner.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Lockery? Thank you, Mr. Lockery.
Thank you.
Someone like to, uh, introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Oh, go ahead, Stephen, you can have.
Please call the roll.
And that.
Oh, this is two closed public hearing.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
And this is approving?
Yes.
Approve, okay.
Yes.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an alternative design associated with a site plan level two development permit for the development of a mixed use project to be known as the gallery, uh, the gallery at Flagler Village pursuant to section forty-seven dash thirteen point twenty point J point three of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations located at six hundred North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Downtown Regional Activity Center Urban Village Zoning District. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and the resolution's approved. There be no further action on this, thank you very much. Um, R three, resolution approving the Fifth Amendment to the ground lease agreement with La Solas SMI Sun Tex for city owned property located at two forty East La Solas Circle. Uh, I have only one person to sign up to speak for questions only, does anyone have any questions with regard to this? When are we gonna start seeing the dig?
Oh, the dig.
Soon, you can come up.
In the morning.
So, Mayor, this is only, only the Army Corps of Engineers permit left, we're almost there, there are a lot of agencies involved in this.
I just wanna answer, it's a simple, don't feel, I'm not.
You always, but you're always like, when are we gonna?
Know where's, when are we gonna start to see the dig?
Well, call up the Army Corps of Engineers, see if you can rush the permit, we're hearing it's gonna be around October thirteenth.
Information you can share with the commissioner.
Certainly, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Robert Lockery on behalf of the applicant. Our intent is, as, uh, Commissioner Glassman has indicated, we have one permit left from the Army Corps, all the other permits are in place from the state, the city and the county. Um, once that Army Corps permit is issued, we'll begin construction of a new lift station for the city. Um, once that lift station is complete, the old lift station can be taken out, and the dig will begin. So we will commence construction immediately after the boat show this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Happily, yes, thank you.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing the execution of a Fifth Amendment to the ground lease agreement as amended between the City of Fort Lauderdale and La Solas SMI LLC for the property located at two oh one South Birch Road and two forty East La Solas Circle, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, repealing any and all resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and the resolution's now approved. R four, huh, City Auditor Annual Performance Review and Merit Adjustment.
Motion to deny.
I'm sorry?
What was I?
I said, would someone like to make a motion regarding this? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Motion to deny.
I just need to know, when are we gonna get the, uh, the financials on the one stop shop, the data and that?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Should have that before you by tomorrow, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
So, the, the resolution doesn't give, uh, a percentage amount, uh, Mr., uh, uh, Mr. Lagerblum, what is the, uh, what is the, um, what is the expected percentage of three percent?
That would be customary, as you know, you can do whatever you choose to do.
Ordinary customary amount, it's three percent.
That would be the, uh, yes, that would be ordinary and customary, I'd, but I would also defer to Mr. Herbst if he had something different he wanted to offer.
Uh, tha- thank you, uh, Mayor, so I leave that blank, cuz I wouldn't wanna presume to, uh, suggest to you a particular range, but I would be very pleased if I would've got the customary amount, um, I, I would not ask for more.
So be it.
Okay, so.
Motion to deny.
Do you want to have any questions? Do you want to have any question, Mr. Herbst's comments?
No, John, thank you for your good work.
Oh, tha- thank you all, I appreciate it, the, the job has been, uh, quite rewarding for me, I'm going on fifteen years now and.
Wow, is this your favorite commission?
Yes.
Absolutely, this is my, this is my third commission.
Motion to accept this resignation.
It just, it gets better every.
Motion to accept this resignation.
Did any other commission even compare?
Not, not in the least, this has been the most entertaining one.
Fifteen years is too long, a motion to accept this resignation. I wanna get a second?
A second. All right, the, uh, who introduced the resolution?
Steve. Yes, I guess, I don't know.
Commissioner Glassman introduced the resolution at three percent. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for a three percent merit salary increase for City Auditor John C. Herbst effective August one, twenty twenty one. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you for your excellent service, seriously, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Abstain.
Yeah, you can't abstain.
Oh, huh, huh, yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, John, yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes, and thank you, John.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and thank you for your service.
Thank you again, uh, again, I appreciate the opportunity.
Don't, don't, don't make us rescind it.
Okay, OFR one, quasi judicial ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, section forty-seven twenty-four and section forty-seven twenty-eight. Uh, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. What, why would we be having disclosures on this, this is an, this is a housekeeping.
I don't know who you talk to.
Would I talk?
I don't know who you would talk to that you would have to disclose.
Staff.
Staff, but that's not disclosable.
All right, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, Commissioner will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record.
So, this is where?
I have no disclosures, I don't think anyone has any disclosures, uh, so, um, someone move to close public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, public hearing is now closed, um, someone like to, uh, introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, implementing the Broward County Land Use Plan flexibility rules in the City of Fort Lauderdale, amending section forty-seven dash twenty-four point one, table one of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, entitled Development Permits and Procedures Providing for Approval Process for Development, utilizing flexibility rules amending section forty-seven dash twenty-eight entitled flexibility rules by replacing section forty-seven dash twenty-eight point one entitled applicability conditions with, with section forty-seven dash twenty-eight point one entitled intent and purpose, creating a new section forty-seven dash twenty-eight point two entitled definitions and section forty-seven dash twenty-eight point three entitled applicability, providing for conflicts and repeal and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and, uh, that passes on, uh, first reading. Okay, OSR, OSR one, uh, this is the second reading, an ordinance amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining compensation table and schedule six, providing a one and a half, one and a half percent general wage increase effective October third, uh, twenty twenty one. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table and schedule six, thereby in Schedule Six thereby providing for a one and one-half percent general wage increase to non-bargaining unit employees in Schedule Six special employees of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and the, um, the ordinance is now approved on second reading. Uh, OSR two, second reading, quasi judicial ordinance approving a request for application of prior zoning regulations of the Intercoastal Overlook Area District and an associated site plan level development permit for a sixty-five unit residential development known as the Ola Kino House Bay Shore Concepts LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Do you have any additional disclosures, Vice Mayor?
Nothing additional.
Any additional disclosures? Commissioner McKenzie, none. Commissioner Glassman, any additional disclosures?
No, sir.
Sorenson, any additional disclosures?
None, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, I have none either. I have several people signed up to speak, but I think you're all interconnected with the project. Uh, Gage Couch, Peter Strumberg, uh, Courtney Crush, and Nelson Humberto Ortiz. They're all connected with the project, okay. Um, anyone have any questions with regard to this? Someone move to close public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Please, uh, someone introduce the, uh.
Introduced.
Before we do that, where'd you get the name Ola Kino? What does that mean? So, you walk through the doors and you suddenly feel euphoric?
Akuna matara.
Hey, sign up.
A hollow.
There you go.
You can?
What do you, what kind of, what kind of, uh?
Good wellness.
Essences are you pumping into the atmosphere in the lobby?
Mayor, you'll have to visit when it's ready.
Yes, I will.
Yes, you can.
Boy.
When you get out of traffic.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. What are you waiting for?
Traffic.
Yeah.
An ordinance approving the application of a prior zoning regulation of the Intercoastal Overlook Area District requirements and limitations as provided in Section forty-seven dash twelve point five D, point D of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations to the development of property described as all of lots three, four, five, and six Block seven Birch Oceanfront subdivision according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book nineteen, page twenty-six of Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Rio Mar Street, south of Terramar Street, east of the Intercoastal Waterway, and west of Bay Shore Drive. All said lands situate lying and being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida pursuant to Section forty-seven dash twenty-six point eight point one of the ULDR and approving the site plan for a development on said property providing for conflicts and repeal and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on second reading. So, good luck with the project. Thank you. Uh, there's no further business to the commission, Mr. Wait, there's no further business of the commission. Uh, Mr. Lagerblum, do you have any further business?
I don't have any further business for this meeting. Do you have anything to ask for?
No. Anybody else have any questions regarding business to the commission? There being none. This meeting is adjourned. I'd like to now, uh, begin the CRA meeting. Um, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Here.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Chair Trent Halls?
Uh, here. Um, there's a fellow that signed up for this afternoon CF one, but it said he's here on the CRA meeting. It's Frank, uh, Guerra. Um, is he appearing virtually anywhere on your?
He's on virtually.
He is.
I am. Present.
Okay, so when I get to that, I'll get to that in a moment. So, M one, motion approving minutes for September ninth, twenty twenty-one CRA board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trent Halls?
Yes, so those minutes are now approved. M two, motion approving subordination of the CRA mortgages from Urban North LLC to a new mortgage in favor of First Republic Bank, amendments to the facade program participation agreement with Urban North LLC and to the Property and Business Management Improvement Program Agreement with Patio Bar and Pizza, amendments to both CRA mortgages and authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the executive director. Um, hold on a second. I just noticed something. This Patio Bar and Pizza, where's that?
It is.
It's at that corner.
Right there, Progresso.
It's at that corner you don't like.
Well, I, I think I'm gonna have to recuse myself because I represent these people. So.
Heather?
That's Mayor.
Here's your first meeting.
Oh, gosh, what do I do? Put my shoes on? Oh, gee, what, what are we, what are we on? Motion two? Okay, what are we on that's?
Yeah, this item is M two.
Sure, M two, and we don't have any public, anyone signed up to speak, Mayor? Do I have any?
He's, he's no longer the mayor.
Okay, is this person in person, or are they on, uh, virtually?
What's the name?
Adams?
Jay.
Jay's here. Jay, would you like to speak about this item? Or are you here just in support of the item, or would you like to speak about it?
He's representative.
I think if there's any questions.
Just if there's any questions. Are you here in support?
Yes.
Are there any, um, questions or comments from anyone on the commission?
No.
No? Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
You're good? All right.
Yep.
Like to move?
Thank you.
Do we have to close public hearing on this first?
I don't think we had public hearing.
No.
Then I'd like to, I'd like to move the item. It's a great, great project and, uh, on the corner there and no problem with the.
Thank you, Commissioner Glassman. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we want to call the roll?
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes, and the pizza's good.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Yes.
And Chair Trent Halls is abstaining.
Okay, very fun. Would you like this back?
He's back.
And Mayor, I know, cause you're very concerned about traffic, but we have that nice reconfiguration happening around there for pedestrian and vehicular safety as well, right on around that corner with the county, so that's coming real.
That's the corner he referenced.
Yeah, that's coming really soon.
Are you finished?
I'm very, yes, I am.
Okay.
He was gagged.
Okay, R one, this is a resolution approving Altis Cardinal Living, um, LLC with the principals Frank Guerra, Alberto Suarez, and Anthony Sejas as, um, new partners, removing the Lansing Melbourne Group with the managing member Peter Flots and adding Yalale Holdings with Principal Felipe Yalale, amending the letter of intent for the West Village LLC project and ratifying Resolution twenty dash oh one.
Mr. Mayor, I need to weigh in on this one if I can, please.
So, we have Frank Guerra is here to speak, but I, I think it's probably just with regard to questions. Greg Bruton, Felipe Yalale, and again Frank Guerra. Okay, so, um, tell us a little bit what's going on here.
Mr. Mayor, if I could start with this one. So, earlier this afternoon, uh, or actually yesterday, the, uh, the auditor came to me and, and, uh, has requested some additional time to review this, uh, particular agenda item. Um, I've checked with our staff and I don't see that there's anything that means it absolutely has to go forward, um, at this point, and so I'd hate to, uh, not have the auditor have sufficient time to perfect the, the review of this that he would like to perfect. Um, we can certainly present more with that, but, uh, um, having heard that from the auditor, I would, I would make a recommendation that we defer this item one meeting.
So, what are you looking to review further? I mean, it just seems like the, the principals are, sold this project to somebody else.
Right, so, so Mayor, um, again, when, when I did my review last week, this was not an item that was at that point approved and moved forward, so I had not seen it until we were going over the agenda review on Monday. So, at that point, I expressed to the manager that, uh, I hadn't had an opportunity to review any of the details, and I would like to. So, it's not to say that there's anything wrong, but one of the questions that we always have, particularly when we're looking at the incentive money, is to make sure that we're not incentivizing a project which is then being flipped before the project gets done. So, whenever I see a change of ownership in that type of a scenario, I'd like to at least look at the underlying details and make sure that we're not essentially, um, allowing profit to be pulled out of a deal that's based on a, uh, on a CRA incentive as opposed to the value of the deal itself. So, that's not to say there's anything wrong with this, and, and I wouldn't want to, you know, suggest that there is.
It is being flipped.
Well, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's profit being pulled out, or if we simply have a change in ownership. I, I don't know enough about the deal yet to understand what's happening.
So, will, will.
So, is there anyone here that knows enough about the deal? I mean, not just, I still want to defer, but has it been flipped is my question, too.
There are people who are, there are people, Mr. Guerra, who's one of the new principals is here to speak, um, and Felipe Yalale, who's one of the old principals is here to speak, but, but, um.
But I want to know, has that property been flipped?
Clarence, you want to come up here?
Or is it just the finance person? Cause they never had a finance person?
Is that right?
From what I understood. He always wanted to develop it.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, um.
What are we doing here?
So, the main principle has not changed. This isn't a flip. What's happening is, um, Mr. Yalale is pretty much an investor, and, uh, what he's done is he's gone out and he's gotten an actual developer that is going to partner with him. Uh, in our letter of interest, we made sure that he wouldn't do exactly what John is, 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 you know, but not, he's, he's not suggesting it, but, uh, what he wants to safeguard against. We made sure that he, he maintains the majority, uh, share or stake in the project. So, uh, his former partner was just basically a consultant, Mr. Peter Flots. He's now replacing Peter Flots with a proven developer who has a proven track record of development as well as a sizable, um, balance sheet. So, there's not, there isn't any flipping going on here. This is him just bringing in a partner that is an actual developer.
Okay, so, Mr. Yalale is still part of this?
He, he has fifty-one percent ownership.
Okay, so, then it's, then the, then the, the heading is, is misleading. It says removing the Lansing Melbourne Group LLC with managing member, uh, Peter Flots, um, okay, adding Yalale Holdings LLP. Why are we adding somebody that's already there?
That's, Lynn, Lynn can speak to that.
Lynn, come on up. Cause this is what I didn't want to do when we first started this deal, so as long as it's not being flipped.
So, Lynn Solomon, um, so he added a, a corporate layer. If you look at the organizational structure, he just added, Felipe Yalale was always there, but it was him individually from what I could see, but now he's, he's created, um, an additional layer that, that, that Yalale Holdings is a partner in West Village LLC.
Okay, so.
So, that's what he's doing.
Felipe Yalale is still there.
Yes.
He personally or through his entity, uh, Yalale Holdings LLP, it are fifty-one percent interested.
From what the organizational chart that you see attached, yes, that's what they presented to the, to the.
Okay. Um, okay, I understand. All right, so, uh, do I need a motion to defer?
May I, may I clarify something, um, Your Honor?
That's Mr. Guerra.
Mr. Guerra, do you want to speak?
Uh, I would, I would be greatly appreciative, uh, if, if I could, yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I think it's important to note, uh, and I understand the sensitivity at, at the, both the CRA level and, and for the City of Fort Lauderdale regarding, um, some sort of random, you know, quick flip. Um, I think it's important to note that the entity that was originally approved is the entity that continues being the owner of the property and will continue through the development and construction of the project. We were brought in to properly, properly and adequately capitalize this project, both with additional infusion of equity, the ability to bring a development and construction loan of adequate size, uh, for the, the, the scope of this project, whereas when it was originally approved, it was being done in two phases to kind of make it more bite-sized and, and eas, more easily financeable. We are able to finance the entire project as one phase, and you'll notice that we set that out in the, the changes that we proposed in the term sheet. Um, so we are coming in as an operating and execution partner, uh, hand in hand with Felipe Yalale. We look, um, very much forward to doing this deal in the City of Broward. Um, we've, uh, been a well-established developer throughout the state of Florida, um, and we've done deals in Texas and Nevada as well. Um, you're, you're happy, we'll be happy to, um, answer any questions you might have, but there's plenty, there's a wealth of information on our website, uh, altiscardinal.com. Um, you can see our track record, you can see the deals that we have completed, which are of larger scope and greater complexity, uh, deals of over a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty million dollars. Um, so, our ability to perform, you know, should, should not be in question due to our track record, but I want to make clear that the exact same entity that was approved in the original approval in two thousand and twenty i- is the exact same entity that is continuing, um, through not only the approval that we're asking for at this, um, meeting, hearing, but also through groundbreaking, through development, through construction, and completion.
Okay.
When, when is groundbreaking?
We are in the process of, uh, getting the plans finished right now. We already released the architects months ago, um, so we're, we're very far along in construction drawings. Our goal is to submit for a construction permit by, uh, December. Obviously, with the size and scope of the project, it's, it's a little bit more complex set of plan, um, plans and drawings and specifications, but we've already turned over the project to engineering, which anybody that is familiar, which I'm sure you all are.
I am.
Development, uh, knows that once you get past original design development and you get into actual architectural detail and, um, engineering, which means MEP, Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing, civil and structural, that's where you spend the real money, and that's where, you know, you've really, you know, committed to the project. We're well past that. Um, we've met with the CRA, we've met with your building, um, and zoning department. We've, uh, kept them up to date on, on everything that we're doing on our timeline and on the nuances that we wanted to tweak, you know, to make this, uh, a viable, um, project, and, and we worked those tweaks into the proposed changes that are in front of you. One of the most meaningful really is, is the timing that was really set back because of the, the almost year-long delay, uh, you know, because of, due to COVID, you know, the capital markets and the, and the construction lending market just, you know, really put a pause on many, many things. Now they're playing catch-up, and it's fine. It's a liquid market now, and it's readily accessible to established developers, but, you know, it is what it is. We can't submit for permit until December, which means we can't get an approval till March or April just on the timing of, of the processing that was, that we were advised that your building department would need. So, we're asking for an outside date of end of June to break ground, um, so that we have the time to get the approval, uh, processed in the timeframe that, that the, the City of Fort Lauderdale is currently, you know, allocating to these, these, uh, these applications.
Okay, all right.
So, so a question, um, Lynn, do you feel comfortable moving forward with this tonight? We're moving it forward, I mean, cause if we come back in two weeks, um, John still have time to look at it.
Well, I think we're gonna, I think we're deferring to John Herbst to review this.
Well, I want to talk to her first. Legal, cause she's done everything. He just, he just got his piece today, so I think he's, he hasn't had a chance to review it. So, do you feel comfortable moving forward? And in two weeks, if it's not, we can pull back or something?
Absolutely. Right, and, and that's, that's really the question here. It's, it's more a matter of needing some time just to review and ask, ask a few questions.
So, so if you're okay, I'm okay with moving it if the, if we have a consensus here, uh, uh.
You mean deferring it?
No, moving it.
I don't want to move it unless, uh, I mean, I, you can make the motion. I, I just.
So, that's why I want to make sure that John and both, uh, Lynn, legal department, uh, is okay moving forward. If not, you, you tell me now, then we'll just wait.
Well, John said he's not comfortable.
He said he's comfortable with me moving it.
I'm sorry.
Moving.
He meant deferring it.
I, I, I'm sorry. I thought the motion was to defer.
The mind is to move the project because we've been waiting a long time. I don't think anything has changed other than Peter Flots is now switched to this new entity. Cause Peter was supposed to be the one that was gonna do the development and the financing initially. A lot of things have happened in the last two years. A lot of things have happened in the last two years. As long as Felipe hasn't gone anywhere, I'm comfortable.
So, the only thing I would say, Commissioner, is that, again, not having the details of the original deal in front of me. So, I just, I don't know that. So, I'm relying on the assurances of staff from the CRA. If you're comfortable with that, again, as policymakers, that's always your decision. I'm just saying, I haven't had a chance to review it, so I can't.
So, if something arises between now and then, in two weeks, where are we, if I moved it to keep it moving forward because of the benchmarks we want to meet to get permitting and those type of things? Because we incentivize on the back end now. We don't give that money upfront anymore.
That is correct. I think what we can do, if you would feel comfortable with this, I certainly would, is move it forward contingent on me doing a review over the next few weeks. If I have any concerns, I'll bring it back to the commission at that point.
Yeah, it's a resolution, so we'd have to revoke, we'd have to, we'd have to just have a resolution, basically.
We can't do a contingent? Can't do it that way.
Well, if you do, the thing is, if you do a contingent, it's the same thing. You'd have to come back with a resolution that repeals this resolution. You'd have to, yeah.
Let's just move to, let's just.
Let's just introduce it.
You were introducing it?
Yeah, we just introduce it.
Introducing to defer it or just introducing this?
Which one? To defer or move it?
To defer, I think defer because it just sounds like John really feels he needs a couple of weeks.
So, you're moving to defer it?
Moving to defer, yeah.
All right. Someone, need a second for that?
Is that a date certain, like October 5th?
Yeah, I don't know that we have a CRA agenda on October 5th, but we can call one for the purposes of this one item, so.
Don't we usually have one the first?
We usually only do them once a month, and so it's curious that we've got one on the second, second meeting of the month and this month. But 10-5 is fine. I just don't know off the top of my head if we do or we don't.
This has been approved, it's been vetted, it has been gone through everything. Only thing that has changed here tonight, and this is why, I mean, it's in my district, so since we want to holler districts all the time. And it has been approved, it's just a matter of John looking at this new entity to feel comfortable with them. So, I don't think it's going to make or break the project two weeks.
No, but I think, I think.
No, I'm going with it, I'm going with it.
Okay.
But another commissioner from another district just introduced something in my district to defer. We typically have been very cognizant of not doing it, yeah. So, and that's fine. I'm going to go along with it this time. But I don't think it's that detrimental based on all the work that we put into this project to get here.
Okay, so.
You can introduce it, Commissioner, if you want.
Is that a second?
I'm not seconding it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so motion to defer to October 5th. Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who seconded the defer?
Commissioner McKenzie.
I didn't second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
I told you I wasn't going to second it.
Do you want, you want to second it?
Okay, second.
Commissioner Glassman.
And this is to defer to October?
To defer to October 5th.
October 5th.
2021.
Cut out for you, Mr. Herbst.
The what? What was that?
He has, we're cut out for him.
Yeah, October 5th.
Earn that 3%.
I have, right, I have that, all that extra incentive now.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trent Hells.
Yes, and it's been deferred to October 5th. Any further business of the CRA?
None of the CRA.
Okay. CRA meeting is now concluded. Let's move to the other post-employment benefits board meeting. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Here.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Here.
Chair Trent Hells.
Here, so BR1, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Quarterly Investment Report, period ending June 30th, 2021. Susan, are you still here?
Yes, she's.
She's coming up.
This is a very similar report to earlier. We can make it quickly again.
Poor thing's been hanging out all night waiting for this moment.
Good evening, Susan Grant, Finance Director. As we said, the OPEB for the quarter and year-to-date, the benchmarks year-to-date, they're at 17.42, again, in excess of the actuarial assumption of 7%.
Great. Any questions? Okay, no action needs to be taken on that. M1, Motion Approving Minutes for June 15th, 2021, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Board Meeting. Someone like to move the item?
Move.
So, seconded.
Seconded, please call the roll. Thank you, Susan.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trent Hells.
Yes, and the minutes are approved for June 15th. Motion adopting the fiscal year 2022 Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund Budget. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Moved.
They're moved and seconded. Any further questions? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trent Hells.
Yes, and the item is approved. Other Post-Employment Benefits Board Meeting is now concluded. Now we'll resume to our, to our Commission Conference Meeting. What was left there was Commission Reports. Well, we have Communications, excuse me.
I moved to defer all of them?
Yeah, well.
To 2022?
Almost 10.
I can easily take those communications and put them on the next meeting during conference. That's no, that is no problem.
Private too, so, yeah.
Okay, well, the Sustainable Advisory Board, okay. What they, all these things can be, can be.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't need to do my whole report. I did want to welcome, though, our new District 2 Outreach Coordinator, Ashley Casaseto. Just, I would have done that earlier, but we didn't get a chance to do it. But just wanted to welcome her to the city and how happy. Yes, District 2 Outreach Coordinator, but she's working for the whole city, so.
Congratulations, good luck to her.
Yes.
What's a District 2 Outreach Coordinator? I don't understand that.
What do you mean you don't understand that?
I mean, what is it?
He just hired somebody to work in his office.
We each have, yeah, how many people in your office?
No, I don't know what a District 2 Outreach Coordinator, I know what aides are. I'm just asking you a question. You answer it?
Well, we have, oh, well, we have specific, you know, responsibilities. So, she specifically will work with all the neighborhood, oh, she's a name, of course.
That's why I asked.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I didn't realize you didn't know.
If you answer the question and listen.
Well, I'm going to practice to be a city attorney.
I'm sick of him.
Mr. Herr, do you have any communication, I mean, any Commission Reports?
Well, I feel pretty good. I emailed all my concerns to Chris during the meeting, so I think, I think I'm okay.
Oh, really?
Wow.
Do you want me to go over them?
Want to share?
Do you want me? I'd certainly go over those. In a nutshell, homelessness is quite an issue again between 26 and Oakland and Bayview and federal. Also, we need to deal with the George English Park Boat Ramp is, part of it is closed because they're doing construction. We have the jet ski vendors causing trouble. Chris is going to work on it. And then Twin Lakes is a little bit up in arms because 15th Avenue is blocked on game days because people are cutting through. So, we're going to work on that. Hopefully by tomorrow, Chris, before their game, something can get done and my team will reach out to Twin Lakes and get some kind of update. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McKenzie, do you have a?
I yield my time to the distinguished gentleman to my right and the one that's being televised from his home.
Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just really briefly, I have continued discussions with the folks from BEAMR and also Boat Show, and I'm encouraged that those two entities are also meeting. So, hopefully we'll have some good news soon in terms of agreements and on that side, and we can continue that discussion. Hopefully, we're also moving along on the leases. I was going to ask, but I don't need to get into the policy. I know that Broward County has a whole vaccination policy now. I have no idea how that fits into what's happening within the state. Maybe we can have that discussion later on.
Before you continue.
Go ahead.
Could I have a motion to extend the meeting past?
Motion to extend.
Motion to extend.
30 minutes.
30.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll. Hello? You have to write faster, Jeff.
I know, I'm trying. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair, or Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
And Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, so the meeting will now be extended to 10:30. All right, please, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, thank you. Maybe we can have a discussion about that at the next meeting, and I'd like to hear what the thoughts are of the city attorney and city manager with regards to vaccination policy for the.
So, the county instituted a $500 bonus to any employee who gets vaccinated and a charge against any employee who doesn't get vaccinated. Any thoughts on that?
A charge for, the charge was for insurance as, like, if I was a smoker, I pay extra money, right?
Correct.
That's what that extra $20.
Dollars a week.
Am I correct?
Yeah, but I don't think the city attorney thinks what the county is doing is legal, so we probably should hear that from him.
All of it is contingent on demonstrating whether you're vaccinated or not. That would be in violation of Florida statutes as we've opined and now the Attorney General.
Well, he also said it is, it does not contradict or conflict with the governor's.
Who said?
Order, that's what they said.
County said.
But it's not, there's no governor orders.
Falls within whatever those laws are.
Right, it's Florida statute under chapter 316. It's no longer the governor's orders. Now it's codified in the statutes. So, we've interpreted, the way we've interpreted it has been, is now being interpreted the same way by the Attorney General, that the person's denotation in that section dealing with local government includes employees. So, if you have to ask someone their vaccination status and get proof of it in order to confer a benefit, you have a problem.
Well, they're not, they're, correct me if I'm wrong.
They're just saying.
I thought that the vaccine passport statute was just to determine whether or not a person could have access to buildings or continuation of their job. This is.
Or services and, any access or services. And services has been interpreted to include, at least argumentatively, has been opined to include employment benefits as well.
So, if you're giving a benefit, you're not denying them a benefit, but if you're giving them a benefit for being vaccinated.
It's still a service. You could, again, you can, it's just.
I don't want to tempt fate, so we'll see how that works out.
Yeah, I mean, City of Tampa is doing it, Broward County is doing it. The approach I've taken with you individually is, we might as well let them fight it out in court rather than us doing it and us be the beneficiaries of whatever occurs from those legal actions. Gainesville, I believe Gainesville has, some workers have sued the city of Gainesville on this very issue, which is where the Attorney General now is interceding as an MCIS curi. So, if we get a decision from there, we'll get some guidance because it's a brand-new statute.
So, if we incentivize and don't penalize, we're okay?
Well, he's saying you can't.
Up until the point that you can't. Right, and then you have union issues as well.
Would incentivize?
I agree with you, but he's saying we can't.
Yeah, because you're going to incentivize some union folks and not others.
No, anybody that produces a piece of paper voluntarily.
Everyone that works in the city, lives in the city, visiting the city, please get vaccinated.
Stephen's going to bring it back that way, Stephen?
Yes.
Yes.
He's been talking about it.
Yes, I have been mentioning it. Mayor, just two quick things. We, I know typically we'll always do a moment of silence, but we didn't really do that the last couple of times. But we did lose one of our biggest cheerleaders ever in Fort Lauderdale. Everyone know the name Jack Drury?
Oh, yeah, Jack Drury, John Drury's dad.
In the 60s to the 80s, he promoted the city like nobody else. He brought a lot of people here. He actually got Johnny Carson to buy a whole bunch of land in Coral Springs. And he was a big promoter back in the 60s, 70s, 80s. He actually did a really cool book, published a lot of photos, and anyway, he did pass away. Just wanted to mention that. And Chris, can we actually ask something of the Historic Preservation Board? I'd like them to have a discussion and get back to us and advise us on what they think about the Bayview Building. I've been getting several emails about that. Charles McCurran was the architect. A lot of people are concerned about the status of that structure. And I have gotten quite a few emails. I was just wondering if that might be a discussion item on an agenda for the Historic Preservation Board. I actually got a very long letter from one of my appointees on the Historic Preservation Board, so maybe they can have that.
I don't think there's any problem with that.
Maybe they can have that discussion.
Once it came to my attention, I guess because of the scaffolding and stuff that's around it now, I think some of the plaster and stuff was falling off, so they're just trying to protect the integrity of the building. I don't think there's any major renovations.
There's been a lot of discussion, but maybe they could just, you know, flesh that out. I have also heard that, you know, other rumors of such and, you know, businesses relocating. And I know it had something to do with the 40 and 50-year inspection. But the bigger question, I think, would be for them to discuss, looking at the ordinance as we have it written. We have changed some of that language since 2019 now, where buildings, if there is a demo permit, we can put a stay on it. If the Historic Preservation Board or Commission, whatever, you know, deems that a structure is significant, even though it might not be officially designated, we have that language. And we also have other language in terms of designation process. But some cities go further. They actually, you know, will take a look, they'll have an inventory of what they consider to be, you know, buildings that need to have special attention in terms of protection. So, maybe that conversation, Anthony, can happen at the Historic Preservation Board, and they can advise us what they think. I just think that would be helpful to us.
We can do that. We can ask them to weigh in. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear to the, we have a building at Bayview and Sunrise that has scaffolding on it that I know is the Key College Building, which is a different building than this Bayview Building, correct?
I'm talking about the one where Maya Papaya is leaving.
Okay.
Across from the Galleria. It's like an L-shaped building.
We're both talking the same building. I just know it as a couple of different names.
A lot of brick facade that's a screening element.
Honeycomb-looking texture.
Close around the 7-Eleven.
Yep.
Yeah, across from George English.
Yeah, isn't that the Jack Avow Building?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know anything about that, Commissioner? It's in your district.
Well, I believe there are some plans for it, so we may want to figure out what those plans are from the representative and see. I don't, I don't know exactly what they are, but I know they have been discussing some different options. So, we may want to get the input from the Historical Preservation Board and the representative to see really what are they doing with that and what are their plans? So, we can make a decision, and it's my understanding, I believe the Commission would be the body to move forward to officially start a designation process if we so choose.
I think the HPB can actually.
You think they can do it?
That process as well.
They're allowed to do it.
They can do that as well.
Okay, so I think we're probably looking at what they say and then where this building is in terms of whatever process they're in, and then figuring out what the next steps are.
I thought we had staff that was doing some type of inventory on what builders could or could not.
Yes.
How can we just pull a rabbit out of a hat and say, because I'm painting or I'm doing something to this building and because of the architectural, I'm just asking. We should now put this in the historical board to see if it meets that criteria. I thought we already had a blanket out there doing this and this building should have.
I don't think we've completed that work.
Yeah, it's not.
We don't have an entire city inventory of buildings. We should, I agree with you.
I thought that's what that person was supposed to be doing.
Well, we have one, I mean, that's another thing I'd like to talk about in the future. I think we should actually have more staff.
But going out, just saying, hey, this building deserves a designation. I just have a.
I understand.
A problem with that.
Anything else?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Sorensen?
Anthony?
I just want to let you know that they, this is on the agenda for the upcoming HPB meeting. There's this building and I think two others that they're going to be talking about. So, we'll have something for you.
The Historic Board?
HPB, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Commissioner Sorensen, do you have any Commission Reports?
Nope, thanks, Mayor, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things.
Really?
This past week, a number of us participated in the, a couple of really important things. The ribbon-cutting at the Parker, really, our investment in that continues to be important and really happy that the community came together and make that a really sparkling new event center for the city.
There was a conflict of scheduling for me.
Yeah, I remember that.
Because I had already.
Golfing.
I'd already committed to St. Patrick's Day, and then the scheduling of this came out. It was a conflict, so.
It's okay.
It was sort of a melancholy moment where retirement ceremony for Officer Sandy Downs Kiesling, who was a true homeless advocate, and she's now retiring and moving out of town with her husband. And really, it was a great loss, but it was well-attended. It was just, just want to, once again, thank Sandy for all the work that she's done and all the many years she's been with our.
Is that the one we had here?
That was the one we had.
In the chamber, so you're okay.
And I want to say that we had the Brazilian Festival here this past weekend and really happy that they decided to come to Fort Lauderdale